Do we have someone here from Speed Memorial Church? Is anybody from Speed Memorial Church? Say prayer? Thank you. I called it early, November twenty seventh, two thousand and thirty, twenty-three, I'm sorry, at six o'clock. Roll call, please.
Present.
Present.
Present?
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present?
Okay, all right, thank you. Please join us for prayer and then followed by the pleasure allegiance.
Am I doing this prayer?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Father God, we just want to welcome to our meeting tonight. We just asked your guidance and ask you to just guide us in all that we do. Just want to thank you for being a part of our town. And Lord, just lead us always in what we need to do with your presence. We just thank you for all you do. We thank you for all the people that serve here. We thank you for all the people that are present here tonight. We just thank for being a good and loving God and guiding our town in a positive way. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, to deliver the Bible which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, motion to amend or adopt the agenda is presented.
So moved.
Got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval of amendments submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon our website.
So moved.
Got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval of allowance claims submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon our website.
So moved.
Got a motion by Randy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval payroll allowance document submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon our website.
So moved.
Got a motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. We're gonna take a minute here to sign. Good, thank you. Comments from the public on agenda items? I don't have one here. I have one on a regular discussion, so follows up with ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number two zero two three dash R dash zero two four, an ordinance considering rezoning of certain properties. In front of you, you have an ordinance considering amendment to the zoning map of the town of Sellesburg. It says, where on the day, eighteenth day of September two thousand and twenty-three, the plan commission of the town of Sellesburg, Indiana, certified a favorable recommendation to rezone certain seven oh three West Utica Street, the property from R one single family residential to B two general business. Whereas to Indiana code three six dash seven dash four dash six zero zero eight, this council may adopt or reject the certification from the commission. Now therefore, it be ordained by this town council of Sellesburg, Indiana, and the recommendation by the commission to rezone property from R one residential to B two general business to hereby adopted or rejected. This order shall be in full force and effective upon its passage and prolongation of evidence of affirmative signatures of the undersigned as majority and newly elected serving members of this council. So Jake, do you have something?
Yeah, so just add, give the general public an opportunity. If anybody had any questions, wanted to comment on this particular petition, you know, being forwarded here to the, to the town council tonight, open it up here, the general public.
Did you say where it is again?
Uh, yes, it is, um, at, um, hold on, let me find it. Seven oh three West Utica Street, uh, from R one single family to B two general business. So way over on the, the turn past, uh, Maple Manor Adult Division, Division. Right there on the turn, the dryers, uh, I think the people were, uh, was putting in a, like a daycare or charlie, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, their intention and use of daycare for, for the property.
Was there a favorable recommendation from the committee?
Yes, it was unanimous favorable from the plan commission.
Thank you.
There are no other comments from the public or anything like that, then you can go ahead.
What, um, what else could it be used for, like in the future, like if they do the daycare for a while? I mean, I know a lot of daycare.
Only daycare.
Yep.
That was part of the.
So the daycare doesn't work out, then we'll get zoned back to.
It could go on to be a daycare, someone else could have a daycare, or they could petition to have it zoned, like changed back to. But daycare was the only lot of business used for them. Uh, it's this corner parcel here, um, in the center. So you can see, uh, Utica Street, uh, runs up and you have Maple Manor there just immediately below it, uh, with a driveway access that goes back to it, so they're changing that to a daycare, which I believe the applicant is here as well. Do you want to chime in on that?
Uh, yes.
You can come up, you can come up to the podium if you need to.
Just for the record, please, also just state your name and your address, please.
Hello, so it's Kim Keller and.
Can you just please state your name and your address for the record for the clerk treasurer?
It's, hello, it's Kim Keller and it's, uh, one one four seven four Whiskey Run Road. The out, the address, it's seven oh three West Utica Street. And we are changing it into a, um, possible in-home childcare facility. Yes.
Okay, does anybody from the council have any thoughts or anything?
I have a question. Uh, in a facility like that, uh, on a, is there a limit on the kids that are there and?
Yes, so the state will be involved. Um, they'll have to come out and do measurements and stuff like that. So we could have anywhere from sixteen or depending on the room sizes and stuff, um, a little bit more, but no more than like thirty-two kids. Yeah, but the lowest would be like sixteen.
All right, and then, uh, I don't know, wasn't aware of the commission meeting on that. Um, the parking, is that, um, is there a parking statute?
There are parking standards that they would have to follow as far as, once the zoning approval, assuming the zoning is proved, there are standards as far as some of that stuff related to business within our zoning ordinance.
So most of your, a lot of your traffic would be pickup and drop off, right?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the only, the only part of that, I guess, uh, is, I'm not familiar with that site. And then when you turn in there, can they turn in and drop off and turn around? I'm just trying to see how that.
Yes, so we will actually be making a, like a turnaround spot for them. They can go back out the driveway. And it's a long driveway along, um, like the house that, I'm looking at it. So they come out, can I step up here?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
I'll bite.
So they will come out and they will go back down this driveway and out of West Street right there. And then come down. So this is kind of like a private, it's a roam, but like it's, it's like a private drive.
Okay. Do you know what the square footage of the facility is?
It's about twenty-seven hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Was that it?
That's all I have. Thank you. Anyone else? I mean, I think, like I said, we're, we're just start, the start of the process. Right, yeah, I've just, is what the general idea was. Let everybody else kind of do what theirs is, but again, I appreciate you coming, uh, to our meeting this evening and explaining, uh, to us here at the council. So with that, uh, being said, uh, I guess I'm, I'm here asking for either a, uh, adopted or a rejected, uh, motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Scott. I have a second by Matt. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, with that said, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Okay, so I need to waive my second reading. I asked for a motion to approve the second reading of twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero two four. I got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Motion to approve orders number two zero two three dash R dash zero two four of rezoning of an R one single family to B two general business, uh, with an adopted, uh, motion.
So moved.
Motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. Uh, okay, our next ordinance is, uh, ordinance two zero two three dash R zero two six. It's an ordinance amending ordinance two zero one six dash zero two eight regarding HR contributions. Is there something that you want to speak before I read?
I'm happy to speak on it.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So there, within the town of Sellesburg, we have a health reimbursement, uh, arrangement set up. Uh, there's going to be a new, uh, I believe a carrier for the town. If you look underneath new business one, uh, that's something that our, our agent of record, Miss Carrie Baker, will be able to speak to us about. Uh, but with that modification, uh, there will be some changes as to how the HRA is set up. And so it amends a previously adopted ordinance, um, that actually amended the original ordinance and it's set forth here, uh, in ordinance twenty twenty-three R two six. But it just talks about how the, uh, the town will make certain reimbursements to the employees deductible for the first portion of it. Uh, and thereafter, it is the employee's responsibility, depending upon what plan that employee is on, whether it's uh, employee only, employee dependent, employee spouse, or or employee family.
Okay, all right. And so, um, as it's, um, says here, whereas time to time, this council desires to amend its ordinances and whereas due to a change in the number of health insurance providers for the municipalities and the plans offered, this council desires to take and keep contributions in line with the town's former plans. And now therefore, it be ordained by this town council the following amendments to ordinance number two zero one six dash zero two eight, an ordinance amending ordinance number two zero one four dash zero zero eight. Section one, which previously amended, section two of the ordinance number two zero one four dash zero one eight is hereby repealed and replaced with the following language. The town of Sellesburg will make a certain contribution to the HRA, which shall be applied first towards the deductible payments of the participants in the town's health insurance program, depending on types of plans below. Employee three, excuse me, three thousand seven hundred and fifty, employee and spouse, seventy-five hundred, employee children, plus the children, seventy-five hundred, employee and family, seventy-five hundred. Upon exhausting this contribution, the participant shall be responsible for making the remaining payments of the deductible as required by the health insurance company. All other section and ordinance number two zero one six dash zero two eight, an ordinance amending ordinance number two zero one four dash zero zero eight shall remain in full force and effective and unchanged by this ordinance. This order shall be in full force and effective upon its passage and prolongation of the evident by the firm of things of the undersigned and as a majority and duly elected and serving members of this council. So after that, let's go, let's go on and what to do in the discussion. Does that sound fair enough? Yeah, just. Okay, all right. So with that, I ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? Thank you.
Yeah, I just had questions. I was at the meeting for the, uh, benefits meeting. And I just want to make clear for everyone that's here that this is not something new, right? We, it's been in place for the last three years? Or has it been two years? I didn't know if Carrie could. I've only been here three years.
Longer than that.
All right. So, okay, longer than that.
Longer than that.
So just moving forward, just for simple terms, what's different now than it was before?
I mean, I, I think probably having Ms. Baker, if you wouldn't mind coming up and answering some of these questions, she would be much better.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. I wasn't sure if the amounts were different or, uh, what, what is the key difference, Carrie?
Hi, so the biggest difference is the way that it works. In the past, we've had a four-tier system. This time, we're only having a two-tier system. So the town pays and then the employee pays, as well as the amount is different. So previously, it was thirty-two fifty and sixty-five hundred. Now it's thirty-seven fifty and seventy-five hundred. Those are the two differences.
So the, the main difference is the dollar amount.
And if I may, for the others who don't know, the reason that we're doing this is our current healthcare provider is dropping us at the end of the year. So this is happening because the current insurance provider that we have is.
They're not, they're not just dropping us, they're dropping everybody.
Yeah, yeah, they're no longer going to.
Right.
Uh, insurers from municipalities.
Correct.
We are getting a new company at beginning of January.
Correct.
So that's why this is happening, as the.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Carrie.
Mm-hmm.
All right, with that, uh, said, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Motion to waive the second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Matt, second by Scott. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Motion to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash R dash zero two six, an ordinance amending ordinance two zero one six dash two eight for the town of Sellesburg, Indiana.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. All right, our last, uh, one of our ordinance and resolutions is resolution two zero two three dash R zero two, a resolution authorizing the exec, execution of NDOT agreements. Okay, so I'm gonna assume that you're on this too.
Happy to. Uh, so this is a resolution. Uh, once again, I'm, I'm sure most people are aware, if they're not, uh, you know, underneath new business, Sellesburg CCMG award, uh, our town manager has just done a great job. It seems like we're, uh, you know, we're getting these awards pretty much yearly at this point. There's no guarantee each year, but, you know, I think, what's the amount, Charlie? Eight hundred thousand and change? So NDOT requires resolution allowing the president to execute these agreements. So moving forward, we'll no longer have to have an additional resolution. It's just to be there. So whomever the president is, Mr. Anmus, you know, you'll be able to execute.
Okay, all right. Um, like states, I guess, whereas Indiana code thirty-six dash one dash three permits any unit in the state of Indiana to exercise any power or to perform any functions necessary to the public interest in the context of its governmental and internal affairs, which is not prohibited by the Constitution of the United States or by the state of Indiana, or denied, or preempted by any other law or not, is not expressly granted by any other law to any other governmental entity. Whereas the Indiana Department of Transportation has requested specific written authorization for the execution of NDOT agreements. Now therefore, it be resolved by this council of Sellesburg, Indiana, as the following authorization, the president's council is hereby authorized, confirmed to have the authority to execute any NDOT agreements and all other documents related thereto, and all documents related to any NDOT grant programs for and on behalf of, and to bind the town of Sellesburg, Indiana. Two, ratification, this council hereby ratifies all prior agreements and associated documents executed by the president's council prior to the effective date of this resolution. Three, effective date, this resolution is affected immediately upon its date of adoption. So, so resolved this twenty-seventh day of November two thousand and twenty-three. So with that, ask for a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved.
Well, excuse me, I, I don't have a hard copy on this, Michelle. You want me to just, you want to sign these, or just want to wait until after the meeting to sign the hard copy?
Uh, you can put that down.
Okay.
Put the number two.
Yeah, my party.
Okay, uh, we have no unfinished business. Uh, new business, uh, once again, like we explained to everybody, is our twenty twenty-four healthcare benefit plan for the employees of the town of Sellesburg. Carrie Baker, agent of record. Uh, let us all note that, just like the chief said and everyone else, uh, Humana has decided to go a different direction, uh, with, uh, supporting municipalities and certain businesses under size or whatever nature it may be. But Carrie has worked very hard and diligently to, uh, get us, I think, uh, and present us probably tonight the best offer we've got. So we appreciate that. Carrie, take over.
So yes, like he said, Humana is no longer offering group benefits, period, to anyone. So we had to look for another, um, plan for this year. And we did a workshop where we talked about. It's gonna be our best options of this. We talked about several different plans, um, and, and HRA benefits and things like that. But it looks like, um, we're going to use the HRA through a company called Garner. And so they will provide some additional benefits to the employees. They have an app that the employees can use to help them find um, providers that are top-notch. They do five hundred and thirty-two different metrics to determine quality and things like that. And then they will actually process the reimbursement from the HRA. We looked for a plan that would have similar benefits for the employees. And so that's part of the reason that the HRA actually changed this year as well, to go along with that. By coupling with Garner, we were actually able to, um, not just maintain the premiums, but actually decrease them. So between the town and the employees, it's a savings of about two hundred thousand dollars for this upcoming year.
So at the end of the day, then, pretty much, the government is gonna make everybody on HRA. Is that pretty safe to say on certain?
Well, the HRA is just something that the town offers as an added benefit to the employees.
Okay.
So yes.
We still have option one and two then.
All of the employees will have the same health insurance plan now. Yeah.
Carrie, was there two plans, Garner, one, and there's another one as well?
There were, so during the workshop, we talked about several different things. It kind of got narrowed down to two options. And it was my understanding that Garner was, was what the board felt like would be the best option.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions or any thoughts or concerns or?
Starts January one?
Yes, it goes effect January one.
Chief, you have?
Just the common questions that, that I know that my guys have asked me, so I can relay this. Under this plan, is this not one that included, uh, the immediate care that's free?
Yes, ER and urgent care is free.
Put out there, immediate care and ER, which we paid dearly for in the past, uh, under this new plan, uh, is free. And I thank you for that. I just wanted to put that out there because that was a, uh, that's a big point for a lot of people.
Did you find out about the teledoc? I know that was a question that came.
Yes, it's considered immediate care, so it would be covered.
Okay.
Okay.
And this will take official action, so vote to move forward with Garner, whatever option you've presented.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion to move forward with Garner's proposal.
Okay, I've got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any last discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. Um, okay, other new business, uh, is, uh, what we was just discussing earlier, was our, uh, CCMG, uh, grant award in two thousand and twenty, twenty-three dash two is, uh, like Jake said, uh, uh, it's been, uh, very, uh, nice for this town to see a complete repave, uh, after this, uh, right here. I think we'll have maybe a handful of streets, uh, that, uh, maybe a little bit newer than, than others, but for, uh, a town our size to be awarded, uh, our inventory is anywhere between seven point four, seven point eight million dollars. Uh, for us to be able to get all this done, along with some bridge work, uh, along with being able to do some driveway, uh, uh, work as well, repairs, uh, you know, once again, this is something that's very exciting for the town. Um, you know, for many years, a lot of us grew up with, uh, you know, patch holes that always had to be done, uh, you know, and things like that. I know we have a great street department, uh, now, uh, moving forward. And we'll start doing, uh, uh, ceiling and stuff like a lot of the other communities end up doing. So we did, uh, some of the crack fill, uh, this past fall. And I'm a little assume we'll continue to keep on doing, uh, just that, uh, moving forward. So Charlie, do you have some other things that maybe you might like to add?
Just as note, so we, we were awarded, um, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-eight cents this year with CCMG program. Um, that includes, um, paving and maintenance that we can use. We use concrete work. We can do in, we can do some storm repair, uh, that's on site. We can do sidewalk repair if sidewalks are present, like we cannot use CCMG dollars to add sidewalk. Um, the road list is selected by, um, ratings, what's called a pazer rating. It's rated one through ten, ten being the best, basically new asphalt, and one being basically nothing. Um, they do have to be roadways, not alleys. Um, within that, because it is state dollars that come in, we do receive state dollars back for these items, uh, on paving. Um, the roads that are submitted are basically submitted based on the pazer rating, um, within that. So this year's list that was submitted was Minor's Way, uh, Beechwood, Papa Street, Buquette, Applegate Lane, North Forest, South Forest, South New Albany from Indiana to Triangle. Um, Penn Avenue, North Norman, from Fulton to Wildwood, Prather Lane, uh, from Shirley to fifteen hundred, basically back to about the turn there. Um, section of Ohio, Eagle Nose Drive, Master Point, Silver Glade Trail, Maple Street, Church Street, Fern Street, um, Mosley Park Road, South Norman Drive, Wildwood Road, Cherry Street, Miller Avenue, Miller West, and St. Paul Street.
Sounds like most of those are downtown area.
They're spread out. We do have some downtown, um. I think there's some in every district, the way it shakes out. Uh, so every part of town's gonna be touched within this. Uh, we do have to submit, um, multiple items to NDOT on a regular basis. Um, like right now, we're working on through the LTAP system. Um, I've gotta go through and I'm updating pazer ratings now. Um, they have to have a five-year asset management plan as part of that, um, which includes what, you know, general maintenance and different things like that. So keep in mind, once we get down through some of these paving items, we're gonna start seeing some other streets that maybe we've already touched three, four, or five years ago. We'll start creeping back up on this list from a maintenance perspective. So like the crack ceiling and things like that, we can submit in for CCMG dollars as well. Like it doesn't have to just be paving. So, um, there are road maintenance programs within some of those things as well. So ideally, we get down and go through. This is basically the last large batch, um, of paving, I think. We might have some incidental stuff next year. Um, for some, you know, some outliers and whatnot. Um, but I think we'll start seeing some of these more of the road maintenance programs start to creep up as we start moving forward over the next couple of years, uh, through that. So, um, once we get to, uh, with this approval, Brad being able to sign that, there'll be a legal document come back from NDOT here within the next week or two. Um, and then we'll be finalizing to go to bid on the paving projects to be done during the twenty twenty-four paving season.
Charlie, if you, if you would, uh, you've been here, you're finishing up your fourth year. How much money have you assisted with bringing to the town, CCMG, approximately?
Four and a half, five million through this program, I think. And we're a seventy-five, twenty-five community, so we will pay. It's that eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, six eighty-five, say three hundred, was it eight hundred and fifty-four thousand? That's the seventy-five percent. So we, as a town, will pay for twenty-five percent, um, over top of that, that number, so.
All right, Charlie, uh, I heard you say the bad word, alleys. Since I live in District Two, uh, we, uh, we have probably the most alleys. we have probably the most alleys because we're in the old part of town. What's what's, um, you know, I'm I'm a little confused. Uh, does the town own the alleys? Do the citizens own the alleys or, you know, the best of your knowledge? If, I mean, there's some alleys that are in real disrepair.
That's a conversation that Jake and I have had and we need to revisit. Um, there was a time when a previous council that we have found in the records basically relinquished all the alleys back to the property owners.
So that's in in the minutes somewhere. That's okay.
That we found. Um, there is a path forward that I've had some talk with our consultant and N dot about, um, adding the alleyways back into our road inventory. And I think there is a somewhat complicated but possible path forward to add the alleys into our roadways. Um, basically, we get paid back from the state and a couple of different funds, um, for going to get your license plate renewed or cigarette tax or a couple of different things.
Right.
Or gas tax, excuse me, comes back to the town to fund some of these things. We're able to utilize and maintain these roadways. We do not get paid my, we do not get paid for the mileage of alleys that we have. And it's a little bit convoluted as it sits now, uh, within the alleyways. Now, what we've been doing is trying to go through and maintain them at this point. Admittedly, some of them need to be addressed.
Well, that's the reason I brought it up. I mean, that they're they're bad, not good, they're not getting better. And I mean, we really, at this point, are we legally, um, tied here whether we can address it or we can't address it or as a town, I mean, if we can't address it, we can't address it. So what what do we need to do moving forward?
I don't think it's we can. I think it's more of a how.
How? That's a good answer. I'm I'm just trying to, uh, I live, I happen to live in, uh, you know, an area where there's eighty year old houses and seventy five year old houses. We have an alley. Uh, I don't think it's been touched in a long, long time. And then I I drive through town, I drive through some of the alleys and, um, they're they're getting really bad, but I realize we don't access the trash off of them. Years and years ago, we used to access the trash off of the alleys. So, uh, I don't know. It's just something I think, uh, a conversation needs to be had going forward that maybe we can bring it up and, uh, because a lot of the districts, I don't think there's alleys in them, you know, but the old town has, the old part of town, there's a lot of alleys and, uh, they're in disrepair, um, you know, but if if it's belongs to the property owner, I don't know how we would address that.
Well, again, I don't know if it's as clean cut as that.
Okay.
And therein lies the concern and the how do we backtrack some of those actions that were taken, um, at this point? Um, but then again, there are also some alleys that currently are are there. Um, there are alleys that are there and maybe currently being used as a driveway, but they're an alley. So, you know, within some of those, do we reestablish the full alleyway as it's plotted?
Okay.
Coming through, you know, in some cases, like City wouldn't, you know, I got notice of one the other day that I thought it was a driveway until I, you know, was informed. No, that's that's an alleyway and there's not really much there. But if you drive up it and back to it, it connects to the alley that's behind. So again, that's, you know, where does that fall? We need to, we need to address that, I guess, somehow, right?
So it's gray area pretty much.
It's, uh,
That's the best way to put it.
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint and then going back and pulling, you know, previously recorded flats from, you know, decades ago and trying to work forward and maybe even working with some of the current property owners, because I would imagine some would love to have the alleys upgraded. So I think it's just something we, you know, we we try to tackle and have a workshop and get a game plan.
I think I think that would be, that would be my suggestion is, yeah, a workshop. Maybe you guys, um, can kind of give us a better idea of how much, uh, how many alleys. I think there's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. I think a rough, rough number. Uh, you know, what what all, you know, what all they might may or what they might cost, how we want to go about going about doing it and maybe we can, you know.
I mean, they they go so fast through my alley, it needs speed bumps or stop signs at the end of it. I mean, that's just, uh, I don't I don't guess, I don't know if we regulate the alleys as far as speed or, um, you know, how that goes. But, um, anyway, I was just curious. I know, uh, if you live in the old part of town, it's it's a, it's a piece of the landscape and, uh, I wasn't sure. I don't think during this administration that we've addressed it in any way. So, you know, I just want to put it on the table. As you say, going forward, maybe we can have some conversation about it. Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, all right. Do you think anybody else?
I have a question. What does C C M G stand for?
Crossing, matching grant.
Okay, all right, all right. So, um, that takes us here to our general comments from the public. I have a, uh, Joe Davenport, uh, three one one East Utica Street, apartment number eight. The police.
Joe Davenport, elderly right across the street from where y'all tore down the police department. And my concerns are is all the stuff that come flying through the air that was supposed to be maintained. Do you know any outcome of that?
None to my recollection.
Well, the reason you're asking is, I took the EPA, supposedly it was all taken care of. The way I understand it, the building was cleaned out a year ago. I've lived across the street from this building for ten years. I've actually worked in this town for thirty years. And I also did restoration in this town for twenty seven years. Here, I've got several baggies of stuff that come out of the building. It's all over our property, all over my vehicle, all over our doors and all over our screens.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Don't get pulled over with those baggies.
Yeah, let's don't do that. That's for sure. I know he's going to send his boys asking if I do. But my question is, is I know that supposedly this was all cleaned up. I talked with the EPA. And the gentleman I talked to, I actually had a speech on my phone, but I may not even go there. Gentleman I talked to was, it was like, it was bothering him to get out of his office and come and check it. And that was the day that they was turning all the ceiling tiles out. And it looked like it was snowing outside.
He was with I D M, correct?
I believe. I had to look up his name again, but it was like a really key expression, but but hurt him to leave his office to come and check, which I really don't even know if you did.
He did. He did.
He did. Okay. Well, he said there was nothing wrong with what was floating through the air. I don't know if any of y'all have ever dealt with the old school ceiling tiles that was glued to the ceilings. But there was also put in with asbestos glue. And it's also fiberglass material. And my vehicle was covered with this. I've had this, normally I've got a deep voice, but not crackly. I've been dealing with this almost every day after they started turning this down. There was no watering. There was no tenting. That was supposed to be promised to be done. But yet this stuff went all over the town. Now who's going to be responsible for any kind of people's medical bills or anything they get from this? I know there ain't no direct answer off the bat, but I want to bring this to attention, especially like I said, what I've got in these baggies. And if I have these tested and they come back positive for mold, asbestos or lead, who's going to be responsible for all this? As as health.
It it that's a valid question, but we're getting into any legal conclusions or anything like that.
Right, right. I don't expect a direct answer at all. I'm just wanting this to be brought up. You know, I'm trying to be fair as I can. Like you said, I've done this business for over forty some odd years. Randy, my ex neighbor, he knows I've done this kind of work for a long time. Chief, I've been in your old building many times on restoration. But what gets me is y'all spent all this money to tear this building down. But yet it was a solid building. It did have a lot of asbestos, a lot of mold and a lot of other issues. But for the money that everybody's wanting to save, to save the old building, hog wild tore it down. For the money y'all spent tearing this down, you could probably spend a third of the money revitalizing this building. But instead, another piece of Selersburg history is gone. So I really don't know what else to say. I just want to bring this to attention. I'm going to have these checked out. I know it's going to be very expensive to do. We've had testing done before when I was with the old company. And, um, I just want to bring to y'all's attention and see if we're going to do something like this again in town to see if this can be done more of a proper way. Because everything that was said it was going to be done was never done. The only water I seen them spraying with was a little two and a half gallon yard sprayer for your bugs and your garden. That was all the water there was. I have probably twenty five videos and probably a hundred pictures. And when I say it was snowing, I mean, it was literally snowing in between my building and the next door building. And then when I leave that day to go somewhere, I get up here on thirty one and there's a whole dang on trail of snow all the way up to the highway for them to get rid of this stuff. So we might want to try to address how we're going to be doing these kind of jobs, if y'all going to do any more of them. But I think y'all really wasted a lot of money tearing this building down to where you could have saved the building. All right. I appreciate y'all. Let me speak. All right.
All right. Um, okay, um, staff reports?
I don't have much tonight. Um, Santa parade.
Santa parade.
Santa Claus comes to town December ninth. Um, information is on the website for that. Um, it will start in the Lakeside neighborhood. Probably one o'clock. Be pulling into Lakeside Silver Glaze one o'clock. If you go to selersburg.org on a homepage, there's a a featured event on there. Santa Claus coming to town. It has the parade route. For those of y'all, um, who maybe have not noticed, Santa doesn't run a single route right down the middle of Utica Street like a standard parade. Santa, this is a Santa comes to your house, comes to your neighborhood, and if he's not coming in front of your house, he will come to probably the nearest intersection down the street from you, um, to where you can walk out, just listen for the sirens. And I think Santa's going to be in the back of a police truck this year. Um, based on a conversation I had with Chief Whalen this morning.
The reindeer are lining up at eleven thirty, correct?
Uh, twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
Reindeer will line up at twelve thirty and will they'll land in, uh, Lakeside promptly at one. And I think it takes about three, three and a half hours for Santa to make it all the way through, um, every neighborhood within town of Selersburg. So. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, wow, all right. Um, chief?
Generally, I say no. So now I gotta say something, so I was like, oh, right. But back on that, our Christmas for kids is coming up also next week. Just wanted to, uh, to put that out there. It's, uh, December sixth. Police Department's taking twenty five, uh, kids shopping, fully funded by the people and the businesses in this community. Uh, and they've been very, very generous this year to to keep this program going. So, uh, publicly, I want to thank whoever's watching, all the people that's donated to this program, because again, it's completely done by donations. Uh, and we've received a lot of donations so we can keep this program going. Uh, also want to thank, uh, Mr. Potteet and Councilor Langford. They put on a car show, uh, on Black Friday at the Legion. Uh, with all donations also come to the program and the car club and them raised, uh, forty seven hundred dollars just in that one day for our program. So, uh, it's a good thing for us. It's a, it's a great thing for the kids. So again, that's that's next, next Wednesday at eight o'clock. And as always, the council is is more than welcome to to join us, know some of y'all have in the past, to, uh, to see how it affects the these children. So.
You say ten o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock at the Moose?
At the Moose.
At the Moose.
All right. Anybody have anything for, ask for chief or anything tonight? Okay, all right. Uh, I have Ms. Lori Wyatt, uh, from J T L. Here she also has, I say, uh, list of, uh, projects and, uh, updates, uh.
I'll be fast. Just the things in the blue.
Not much blue on here, so we're.
Blue or major update. Um, we talk about ziptility all the time, but we're continually making updates with that. Um, and I think the staff is really enjoying having that, uh, ease of use in their pockets. Um, the police station demolition, as you all saw, is basically complete, which is finished way ahead of schedule. Um, so that is great. The, we're still working on asset management under wastewater for the Ivy Tech two, um, pump station. We have a conceptual design that I am hoping to be able to get with the town manager about, um, hopefully by the end of this week. As far as the treatment plant goes, we are still meeting weekly with the operator and staff for any operations and warranty, uh, updates. And we have some suppliers, um, that are coming in to help with additional training as well as, uh, taking care of some parts that are needing to be replaced. Um, while while we are still under warranty, we want to make sure that we're addressing all of those things. Um, on to your road sections. I think you all just heard about all the C C M G things. Um, the last piece that we are waiting on are the guardrails to go up on New Albany. And those were, um, it just took a little while to for them to be able to get those, but I think he said he's picking them up tomorrow. And then for State Road sixty, the project is substantially complete and the pre-final inspection has been held. And all remaining punchless items are hopefully going to be complete this week. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a question, uh, back to the police station, police station demolition.
Sure.
Uh, by the way, I was here on, I think they started demolition on a Friday or Saturday. Was it of last week?
They had started prior to that.
Okay. Well, I will have to commend Lori for being here around seven o'clock on a Saturday evening. I rode by here and some of the secure areas weren't secured and she was here to oversee that. And I think you were here for a couple of hours that evening. Um, uh, it is, uh, Joe's questions are, um, very valid and, um, and I thought that we, as you said, the environmental abatement is what I'm looking at for lead based paint, the best asbestos and hazardous materials has been completed. Um, and I'm not familiar for the step by step, uh, stuff that happened, uh, before, uh. I know with any building or any kind of demolition, you're going to have dust and that type of thing. I understand that. But, uh, it it's a little disturbing if, you know, things were, you know, not done properly. And I think we did our due diligence to, uh, to do that. And, uh, you know, we did have an engineer on site and, uh, uh, I would really, uh, I'd be surprised if it wasn't done correctly. So.
So I can address that a little bit.
Okay.
Um, the abatement, uh, took place, I believe it was like November first and second. Um, around those dates, they were, uh, I think it was R H Environmental was the subcontractor to the prime contractor who's doing the demolition. Uh, they came out and did all the abatement. We have their completed certifications. We have their testing results where afterwards they were approved that everything was gone. Um, on top of that, the notification that they sent to I D M was actually as a courtesy. There was less than the required notification amount of asbestos containing material found in the building. And, um, they still, as a courtesy, went ahead and made that notification. So, um, all of that was removed. It's been tested since then, cleared for reoccupancy, which is then they started the demolition.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Lori? Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate everything y'all have done. Uh, Jake?
Just one update. A couple of meetings back, uh, you all had approved, you know, any of the notes of tort claims, anything comes up, anytime we settle anything, just to, you know, report back to the board. Uh, back in August, mid-August, uh, the police department was involved in pursuit. There was a subject fleeing, uh, put out the, what they stop sticks. Stop sticks. And they did get the, uh, you know, the person fleeing. However, there was a couple who came through, saw it, couldn't slow down enough, popped a tire, obviously, just kind of part of it. So, uh, so we went ahead and covered that tire. It was the, you know, just something that happens, you know, policing, if you will. So, uh, they were great to work with. We set them down. It's five hundred and fifty five dollars. They had to stay the night here and get their tire fixed. They were from floor to passing through. So, um, that was the only thing here as of late that we kind of resolved.
And they've got a great story to tell.
They do. So that was all. That's all I had.
Levi, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if there's a way that citizens can access any of the environmental tests that were done. We can see those results.
Lori, you want to speak on that since you're shaking your head?
So those are all going to be available via open records with us. So those are all going to be available via open record request as well as if the town, um, you know, wants to have them here, we can make sure those are here. That's, that's a conversation that I guess would require, uh, permission from the attorney, um, and, and, and the council. But we have all of that and.
I would say, you know, that my right, your right, transparency, that, that's what it's all about. And so, you know, pursuant to the Indian open door laws, you know, just requested, I'm happy to sit down and have any conversations and there are very few exceptions to why something is not, you know, offered to the general public and there are reasons and if the answer is no, we're required by state statute to, you know, why. But other than that, you, you know, the general public, myself, anybody, you should be entitled to see just about. Yes, sir.
I will say that the report from the initial investigation that determined the asbestos commit, asbestos-containing materials, uh, lead-based paint and any other hazardous materials was completed and was part of the, um, bid package that went out, uh, which should possibly still be available, um, through win imaging as well.
Good, alright, um, you wanna go first tonight, Jerry?
I was just gonna talk about the car show a little bit, uh, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. Car show, like you said, we had a hundred and thirty-eight paid cars, uh, the Potteets over here at, uh, Frame It, they, uh, they pretty much sponsor the, the car show. I just donate my time as far as, uh, announcing and whatnot, uh. It went on, I know the, the Legion probably made a lot of money that day because they were very packed all day. Like you said, forty, uh, forty seven hundred.
Forty-seven, sixty.
Sixty on the money, so that's gotta help with, uh,
Absolutely.
with the Christmas for kids, so that's all I have.
Okay, alright, Scott?
No, I have nothing.
Alright, Matt?
I mean, I'll speak on, I mean, I think Terry went last year, um, to shop with the cop and to see the kids and how they react and, and have fun. It, it's a blessing to know that you're, we're making a difference in their lives and giving them things that they probably would not get if this program wasn't in place. So the blessings of the community and stepping up and helping out is immensely appreciated. I'm gonna try my hardest to, to, to attend again this season, um, it was fun last year and, uh, I want to be part of it again, so. But other than that, it's just, uh, the season to, to help and to give back to our community, so. And I think we're all part of that equation, so I appreciate all you guys and, uh, I'm looking forward to next year.
Okay, alright, likewise, Randy?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to, as the chief said, thank Terry personally for, uh, getting involved and, uh, spending his time and, uh, it was a big feat and a, a large sum of money to, uh, raise for the shop with a cop and, uh, many thanks for that. Like to thank the town employees, uh, for what they do every day. You know, uh, the bank, where it seems like all the, the problems are in District Two, we're down here in the old part of town and, uh, I was one of the first people that was, um, with the demolition of the bank, you know, it was very, I've been here, wow, since Flintstones, I guess, since the seventies, but, uh, you know, bank has always been a fixture. I would have, um, would have liked to have seen it, and I'm speaking for Joe back there, would have liked to have seen it, uh, been renovated. I think the building was nineteen thirty, if I remember right. I really think we exhausted the efforts and, you know, the, I think the mold was a huge part. I know we had, uh, we had, uh, police employees and people that worked there that were having some issues with that. You know, I'm not a, uh, person that, uh, knows a lot about that, uh, I would say cleaning that type of thing up, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's a soft spot and I, I kind of wish it could have been renovated and made into something else, but, uh, this is where we're at. You know, I'd like to congratulate all the guys, uh, we, we had a election, um, we got the vote of confidence from the public. And, you know, we're, we're here to serve and, uh, you know, my number's in there, I'm always available. Uh, if I can help, it's like I spoke up for the alleys, uh, I have an alley with my house, I've seen some of the alleys pretty rough, you know, and a lot of us live off the alley, my neighbor behind me, he, uh, his garage is off the alley, that's where he parks. You know, it's, it's rough getting in there sometimes, so, you know, I'm just, um, I'm happy to be, uh, a servant for the town of Sellersburg. I appreciate, uh, the voters doing what they did, seemed like they came out and, uh, you know, we have a vote of confidence and we don't do everything right, um, you know, we try. And, um, you know, we're just, uh, just people that come from their house, just like everybody else and just try to, uh, do the best we can and, uh, just proud to be a, a resident of Sellersburg and, um, proud to see all you guys out tonight, glad you're here, that's all I have.
Good, alright, thank you. Some of my comments, uh, this evening, uh, first of all, I know we probably got a little backtracked here, um, our street guys have been doing a lot of hard work here in town. So our lighting for our family photo and our decorating up here at Wilkinson Park will start, um, here mid to late week, uh, so we do kind of apologize for some, this is something that, um, we've kind of taken on, they've kind of enjoyed doing it themselves a little bit more. I think our goal is a little bit maybe going forward in two thousand and twenty-four to bring back the topic of, uh, our beautification committee, uh, and trying to get a little bit more people, uh, involved, we tried it, uh, three and a half years ago and, and, uh, we had some interest and, and then, uh, just kind of, just fell through the cracks and so, um, like I said, hopefully after this, uh, this first four years of what this council has done as a whole and as a team, uh, you know, maybe it will spark that spark back up a little bit more to see what all we've done. Like I said, um, for us to be able to pay, uh, seven point four million dollars in payment, um, you know, over my last six years has been a, a very much of accomplishment. Uh, like I said, I know that when we brought in our town manager, Charlie Smith, he had, uh, upgraded and upscaled about what we was having, it, it goes to show, uh, you know, that we made the right choice. Uh, and, uh, he had the right, uh, folks, uh, you know, that was able to be willing to, uh, help do what we do. I think, you know, the governor and his staff, along with our senators, uh, and our council, uh, representatives, uh, uh, congressmen's and, uh, what not there is, uh, they see what's coming to Sellersburg for us this year alone to be awarded, the three awards that we have been awarded, uh, is amazing. You know, so, um, you know, it, it takes, you know, it takes, uh, pride and it takes desire for us to do what we do up here. Uh, and I, and I appreciate everyone y'all for that. As far as the bank and the old town, uh, police department, uh, once again, you know, my dad's lived here eighty-four years. And, uh, you know, my grandpa moved here from Duluth, Minnesota to get a job at Speed Plant. You know, we, we looked at different things, uh, you know, I, I know our clerk treasure, uh, her and, uh, and, and Robin, uh, they both was, uh, you know, on a committee when I first got on here and we looked at a different way to do some different things and, and, uh, but once we started to get into, then, uh, the grinding and, and the desires of what really needed to be done, uh, you know, this was our best choice, I mean, I'm sitting here, I've been, I've received four texts, uh, from people watching, thinking, you know, they, the company did a great job. Uh, you know, they like, you know, I think what maybe we may or may not be doing, uh, moving, uh, forward, uh, with this property. We're gonna leave it some green space for a little while and, uh, hopefully, uh, once our redevelopment and our tith dollars start growing, um, we'll, we'll make a decision. Hopefully this shows a sign of investor, uh, opportunities, uh, you know, down here in the downtown, uh, area, uh, as well. Uh, we've got a lot of different areas, uh, of, of opportunity, uh, for people. I know, uh, like I said, all of our boutique shops and, uh, different, uh, different smaller shops have all stayed open for a year. And so I congratulate every one of them for their desire to take that risk and, and want to call Sellersburg their home. And so I, I, you know, it just, uh, I know it's aggravating, it's aggravating, it's nerve-wracking and, uh, you know, Mr. Dan Ward, I'm sorry for some of the issues that you've, uh, uh, had to deal with and, uh, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll be able to, uh, 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 help in whatever way it needs to be done. And I appreciate your desire to want to come in there and, and, and try to help the chief out and, and, and help, uh, you know, our department and see what we have. Uh, but, you know, I, I hope come, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, we've got some other exciting news to, uh, share with everyone, uh, about, you know, what, what our next move and what, what we may be doing next. So, um, but realistically, uh, you know, what we have done, uh, you know, uh, over Mosley Park, we've got, uh, two pickleball courts that are gonna be coming up. Sorry we didn't get them done till later in the fall, but next spring, I hope everybody has a desire to want to go out there and enjoy them. Our splash pad, uh, that we've invested in, we had to go a different route to be able to make that a part of our, uh, pool, uh, area and community. Uh, you know, like I said, you're seeing a lot of great, exciting things going on up at the school. So, um, you know, I know their, their efforts and their desires to, uh, you know, uh, do what they feel is best for, you know, all of, uh, you know, our younger, uh, children, uh, grand, grandchildren and, and, and kids, uh, you know, trying to give them the best opportunity, uh, to get an education and, uh, get a better job and, and opportunity of life. Uh, so I appreciate what that school board has done, uh, and their desire to want to move forward. So it's the same thing that we do here, at the end of the day, uh, we've got great staff. Kerry, I really appreciate what you have been able to do to help us with our insurance. And, uh, like I said, I know it has, uh, you know, it has a part to do with your life as well. But, uh, at the end of the day, uh, you know, this was a, a nerve-wracking year, uh, and I'm sure you probably had a lot of other, uh, clients, uh, feeling the same, uh, way. So again, I appreciate your hard work and your desire, I know it took, uh, you know, four months, I think, when we first had our first conversation about this. So, uh, again, thank you, uh, so, um, I think that's pretty much all I have, uh, tonight, and Michelle, do you have anything, uh, that you need to add? No, Charlie has some, Michelle, do you have something you need to add? Eleven, correct, all right, we'll, we'll have only one board meeting, uh, December the eleventh, six o'clock. So with that, um, I ask for adjournment. Got a motion by Matt, does a second, second by Randy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, aye, seven oh one.